Good evening. I'd like to call the April 15th School Board Meeting to order. Thank you everyone for being here tonight. First, I'm going to call on our pledge leader. Caled Reader will lead us in the pledge to the flag. Caled moved to Picocin in 3rd grade and quickly fit right in with our school and our community. He has a twin brother. His favorite subject in school is math and at home he plays tennis and video games, but his favorite hobby is reading. Caled has a lead in the Alien Zeta in the 5th grade play this year. Caled?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our inspirational reader tonight will be Brian Taffazoli. Brian will read a quote from Carl Orff tonight. Brian is also a 5th grader at Picocin Elementary School. He has an older brother who is in college, so it sometimes feels like he is an only child. His favorite subjects at school are math, geography, and music, and he plans to take band in the middle school next year. Brian has many hobbies that keep him busy, such as my favorite, beatboxing, trampoline, drum lessons, and a new favorite, skiing. Brian played the rapper Kappa Lambda Mu in the 5th grade play this year. Brian?
Okay. Carl Orff was a composer and educator who believed in building musicianship in every learner through the combined use of music, movement, speech, and drama. He believed that music had value for every student, not just the musically gifted students. He helped create these instruments that we use in our after-school groups so all the students could be successful. His belief was that by working together in a musical ensemble, children would of course develop musical skills, but also other skills such as tolerance, helpfulness, patience, and then they would become problem solvers and improvisers. Here's some quotes by Carl Orff that might give you a better understanding of him. "Since the beginning of time, children have not liked to study. They would much rather play, and if you have their interests at heart, you will let them learn while they play. They will find out what they have mastered is child's play. Elemental music is never just music. It's bound up with movement, dance, and speech, and so it is a form of music in which one must participate, in which one is evolved not a listener, but as a co-performer. Experience first, then electricalize." And finally, "Tell me I forget. Show me I remember. Involve me I understand."
Brian? Brian, I toyed with asking you to beatbox tonight. Would you have been able to do that if I'd asked you to?
Go ahead.
Give us your best 15 seconds. I don't think Dr. Parrish was comfortable with me doing that. It turned out really well.
It turned out well, thank you.
Our student presentation tonight has been given by the Picocin Elementary School Orff Ensemble, a volunteer after-school group of 4th and 5th graders that meets twice a month. Orff instruments were invented by composer and educator Carl Orff. He felt children should have high-quality instruments to play, not just toys or watered-down versions of real instruments. In Orff Ensemble, we play xylophones, metalophones, and glockenspiels, as well as other percussion instruments, including drums. The students combine singing, playing, and improvising. Tonight, the group is playing two songs that show some of the different areas of music they explore during the school day as well in their after-school club. They are directed by Susan Northcutt, music teacher at Picocin Elementary School. And before the presentation, after this wonderful presentation you'll give, we'd like you to remain. We have a few pieces of recognition that we would like to do, and then we'd like to come out and chat with you just a little bit. So there'll be a couple of things that happen after your presentation, but we're looking forward to this. Come on up.
(Singing) Pretty big house in New Orleans, forty stories high. Every story in that house filled with chicken pie. Oh, Eliza, Eliza Jane. Oh, Eliza, Eliza Jane.
Our lineup has changed several times, so I think we're ready.
Wonderful. Ms. Northcutt, thank you very much, and students, wonderful. Are there any additions or modifications to the agenda, Dr. Parrish?
There are none this evening.
Then we'll move right into recognitions, and students, please stay with us just for a few more minutes. We really do want to talk to you.
As Mr. Cast moves over there to start with our recognitions, I'd first like to ask Riley Howell to come forward. Riley is a senior who won second place at the state competition in wrestling in the 195-pound category. During his junior year, he won second place in district, third in region, and fifth in state. This year, he won first place in both the conference and region levels. After high school, Riley plans to attend Old Dominion University and major in finance. Please join me in congratulating Riley for winning second place at the state wrestling competition in his division. Next, I'd like to ask Brandon Skalut to come forward, please. Brandon is with us this evening because he won first place at a national trumpet competition. Brandon is a senior at Picocin High School and is principal trumpet and soloist at the high school Islander Band. He recently won first place at the national trumpet competition held at Messiah College in Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania. He played Oscar Bouma Concerto in F minor, Movement I. Sorry, Mr. Spruill. Brandon is very involved with music, both in school and outside. He is a member of the Tri-M Music Honors Society and is principal trumpet for the Williamsburg Youth Orchestra. He won the concerto competition for the Williamsburg Youth Orchestra and will perform the solo at their May concert. Also in May, he will perform the Humble Trumpet Concerto with the Chesapeake Wind Ensemble at the Ferguson Center. Please join me in congratulating Brandon Skalut. I'd like Tyler Spruill to come forward, please. Tyler plays the euphonium in the Picocin High School Islander Band and is a senior at our high school. He plans to attend Old Dominion University after graduation. He has been in the Picocin High School Islander Band for all four years of his high school and received a superior rating for our solo euphonium performance in the chamber recital in May of 2013. In addition to his band activities, Tyler is also a past treasurer of the International Club, volunteer at the Newport News Food Bank, youth reader and usher at Demby Presbyterian Church, as well as a member of the Picocin lacrosse team. We are congratulating Tyler today because he was selected as a member of the All Virginia Band, so please join me in congratulating him on this accomplishment. Now I'm going to ask Brandon to come up again, please. Brandon, like Tyler, auditioned with other high school musicians from across the state to participate in the All Virginia Band and Orchestra. You are able to watch them in the culminating, well, actually, they already had it, but the culminating concert was held on April 5th up at Virginia Tech. Brandon will be attending college to pursue a degree in trumpet performance at either the Peabody Music Conservatory at John Hopkins University or at Virginia Commonwealth University. He then plans to attend graduate school for his masters at Rice University or the University of Georgia. His life goal is to perform in an orchestra or a premier military band. His favorite subject at school outside of music is World Studies II, and he enjoys his class with Mr. Flynn. Please join me in congratulating Brandon again for his selection in the All Virginia Band. The fact that we have our seniors who are graduating our music program here in our elementary school, or 5th graders who are sort of just beginning their career, I think is rather fitting, so perhaps we'll see some of our 5th graders receiving these awards in a number of years. At this time, I'm very excited for us to recognize our Teachers of the Year, so I'm going to call them up one by one and share a little information about them. This is always a very exciting evening for us because they really do the hard work of our school system with our students. I'd like to start with the primary school and ask that Lisa Barton come forward. I want to recognize that in the audience with her today are her daughters Hannah and Sarah Barton, her parents Paul and Lori Lester, her husband Sean Barton, and Hannah's boyfriend Harrison Minard. Ms. Barton received her bachelor's degree from Christopher Newport University. She has taught for 28 years with all of it being in Picocin. She currently teaches 2nd grade at our primary school. She has served as a member of the division's reading framework committee. She's served on the division's grades committee. She's also served as a member of the community and school improvement committee at the primary school. She's served as grade-level field trip coordinator and also as grade-level chair. As part of Ms. Barton's philosophy, she believes children learn in a structured and caring environment where routine and expectations are clearly set. She knows that children learn best when the teacher provides an exciting atmosphere in a classroom. She states that each child is repeatedly told that they are important and capable. They come to believe that they can succeed academically, and so they are rarely surprised when they do succeed. Her classroom is filled with that message that each student can and will learn. Please join me in congratulating Lisa Barton as our Teacher of the Year at the primary school. And next, I'd ask Ms. Susan Northcutt to come forward, please. Northcutt is accompanied this evening by her husband David Kreitz. She received her bachelor's degree from Central Methodist College. She received a master's degree from Old Dominion University. She's taught for 23 years in Picocin and has 33 years of teaching experience. She currently teaches, as we know, middle school at the elementary school. She's served as a grade-level chairman for the past five years, member of the Olvea Committee from its onset. She's a member of the PES leadership team. She's also served as a mentor to new teachers. She's served on the elementary schedule committee, and she was recognized this year as an outstanding music educator in Hampton Roads by the Virginia Symphony. As part of her philosophy of education, Ms. Northcutt notes that she does not teach music, she teaches children. Her goal is to have students continue to have music in their lives beyond 5th grade. She wants her students to experience joy and delight every time they come to music class. If she cannot reach them with music on a day that makes it difficult for them to open up to the joy and delight, she surrounds them with music and tries to reach them with kindness and compassion. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Northcutt on being Teacher of the Year for our elementary school. And our middle school Teacher of the Year, if you would please come forward, Mr. Justin Grabowski. He is accompanied this evening by his wife Ruth Ann Grabowski. He received his bachelor's degree from Christopher Newport University. His master's degree he received from Virginia Commonwealth University. He has taught for 17 years, with all of those 17 years being in Picocin. He currently teaches 6th and 8th grade social studies. He serves as a member of the Faculty Council for National Junior Honors Society. He developed curriculum for the middle school geography class, and he also serves as a registrar for two history-based conventions. Mr. Grabowski believes history education is important, and he cites the quote, "Those who forget the past are condemned to repeat it." He bases his philosophy in part on Freeman Tolden's book, Interpreting Our Heritage, which includes six different principles. He also believes that it is important to take as many opportunities as possible to engage students or have them engage with him. In this way, he creates a personal relationship with a student which has a positive effect on the student's behavior and as a result, makes the students better citizens and better students. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Grabowski on being selected Teacher of the Year at the middle school. And if Ms. Christine Peterson would come forward. She's accompanied this evening by her husband David Peterson. And Megan. She is our Teacher of the Year for our high school. She received her bachelor's degree from the Women's Christian College in Madras, India. Her master's degree was received from the College of William &amp; Mary. She taught for 21 years in Picocin, has taught for a total of 26 years, including one year in India. She currently teaches special education at our high school. She's served on the school division grades committee. She's also served as a screener for the Virginia Alternate Assessment Program Collection of Evidence. She has scored Virginia Grade Level Assessment Collection of Evidence. She's a cosponsor for S2S at Picocin High School, which is the program that welcomes new students into our high school each year. She has also served as a mentor to new teachers. Mrs. Peterson views herself as a facilitator of learning, not as an expert who is present in class each day to deliver information to her students. Teaching to her is an opportunity to open mind, to be the catalyst in creating an awareness of self, an appreciation of self, and a desire to be the best that one can be. She tries each day to create in her students an awareness of self and desire to develop that self into a resourceful, caring, and productive citizen. She believes that life is an ongoing educational journey. She also believes that we evolve as we face each day, learning from our triumphs and our failures, our joys and our disappointments. Impressing this upon her students is what she believes is her role as an educator. Please join me in congratulating Christine Peterson, our high school's Teacher of the Year. I'm now going to ask Mr. Graham Wilson, who is the president of our Kiwanis Club in Picocin, to come forward to recognize our teachers.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the segue. I'm glad I didn't have to follow the kids and also the beatboxing, because that's not my thing. This is one of the times where I feel truly fortunate to be the president of the Kiwanis Club of Picocin. Honoring our teachers, especially those that excel, is indeed a privilege. It's especially nice when I can extend a personal congratulations to teachers that I have known for a long time, like Lisa, and others that have made a positive influence on my very own children. Picocin is blessed to have one of the highest-quality school systems in Virginia due to the dedicated efforts of all of our teachers. And being recognized as a top teacher in such elite company is truly a testament to your commitment and proficiency in educating our youth. The Kiwanis Club strives to embody the goals of Kiwanis International in positively improving the world, one child and one community at a time, through our growing charitable work with Picocin School System. Your efforts for the 2013-2014 school year mirror our own efforts to positively influence our youth and our community. So I, along with every parent in Picocin, owe a debt of gratitude to these wonderful teachers, as well as all the teachers in the city. Representing the now 125 members of the Kiwanis Club of Picocin, I am pleased and honored to present each of you with a check for $250 in recognition of your outstanding work. So I'll call each of you. Ms. Lisa Barton, whom I've known for so long, congratulations. Ms. Susan Northcutt, who taught both of my children in music.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
Oops, I think I maybe gave you the wrong letter. I might have given you the wrong letter. I gave you my notes. I don't need my notes now, I'm done with them. There you go. Justin Grabowski, congratulations.
Taught my daughter in social studies since 7th grade.
Thank you.
Yes, indeed. And Ms. Christine Peterson, who's been helping my son geometry. And congratulations to all of y'all again.
On behalf of the teachers in the school division, I just want to thank the Kiwanis for their support, and I know we have a number of Kiwanians in the audience here today with Graham Wilson, and we appreciate you coming and showing your support for our teachers and our students. We are very fortunate to have you with us in our community. At this time, what I'd like to announce, and our teachers do not know who this is, but our Division Teacher of the Year. Our school division teacher of the year will go on to compete with school division teachers of the year from throughout the state for the state teacher of the year. And the school division teacher of the year is selected by a committee made up of a variety of school division employees. At this time, I would like to congratulate Christine Peterson for being the school division teacher of the year. And again, congratulations to all of our teachers and everybody in the audience. Please know that our meetings are recorded and will be online, so you can share this with relatives far and wide. Once we get it online under school board meetings, it'll take us a couple weeks to get it up there, but know that you'll have it forever. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cast.
Now, we are going to take that promised short break so we can talk to each of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
... achievement based on the percentage of our economically disadvantaged students. Our Title II funding is to provide professional development activities to teachers and to administrators to ensure that our teachers are highly qualified and to reduce class sizes. However, I'll point out here, to really to reduce class sizes, you have to receive enough funding in order to support funding for one teacher. And what we see here is $44,000 doesn't cover the cost for one teacher. Our impact aid funding, now, a lot of us are familiar with that. This is the funding that we receive for federally connected students. Those are for parents and guardians that are in our armed services or work on federal property. And as I said, this funding, I'm sure everybody's familiar with, because the funding is directly dependent on these federal survey cards that parents receive and complete every fall. And I'll tell you, there's an exhaustive effort at our schools and at our school board office to account for each and every one of these parent survey forms, because these forms, or the completed forms are dependent upon the funding that we receive. The Carl Perkins Grant is funding to assist with our vocational education programs. And food service is funding to assist with providing complete meals to our students. And when I say complete meals, that means a meal that a student has when he purchases a fruit, a vegetable, a meal, a meat, or a meat alternative, and milk. And there's three basic reimbursements that we receive. It's $2.93 reimbursement for a student who has been identified as free, $2.53 for somebody who's been identified as reduced, and 28 cents for somebody who's not qualified as free or reduced. So I wanted to give you that oversight of federal programs. We don't talk a lot about it, because we don't see a lot of movement. Well, like I said, we've only seen $7,300 increase from 2009. But what's important to note about our federal programs is that we aren't receiving sufficient federal funds to pay for the cost of our programs, particularly in the special education area. The mandates continue to come from the federal government, but the money just doesn't follow. So with that, that's my presentation this evening.
Any discussion or any input? Thank you, Mr. Bowden. Mr. Pappas, could you come forward and give us the operations update?
Good evening, Vice Chair Cast, School Board, Dr. Parrish. Now that the break is over and students and faculty are back, we are glad to let you know that we used the break at PCPS in the Plan Ops Department to perform many needed services. At the primary and middle school, we converted from heating to air conditioning. We could probably use the heating tonight if anybody's in the school, but we were able to, we did that over the break. Additionally, we were able to perform preventive maintenance, annual preventive maintenance on the large centrifugal chiller at the high school, as well as the air-cooled chiller at the middle school. In custodial services, custodial team did some deep cleaning in our locker rooms and adjoining areas to those locker rooms to include pressure washing the lockers themselves. In food service, every five years for large contracts, we have to go out to bid. And this year, our food service contract is in its last and final year. So we use a purchasing device called a request for proposal. And we've put that together, and we've set that out, and it's on the street, if you will, where other food service providers, including our current food service provider, will review it, go through pre-bid, and make a proposal to us for food service commencing this year, July 1. Typically, the contract is for one year with the option to renew for four. In transportation, last month, we consolidated or eliminated four individual trips each day. This was actually a difficult task, but was made significantly easier by our software, which enabled us to perform rezoning. We were able to figure out where children needed to go and which buses they might need to be absorbed by. And of course, the use of our parent notification software made this rollout much easier. Transportation services are very busy at this time of year, especially with the commencement of spring sports, field trips, and after-school activities. Lastly, anybody wishing to be trained as a substitute bus driver is strongly encouraged to contact us at the school board office. And that's my Plan Ops report.
Input or discussion? Thank you, Mr. Pappas. Okay, I'd like to call on Ms. Colley for the instructional update, please.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Cast, Dr. Parrish, members of the board. I trust everybody had a great spring break and are going to have a great rest of the school year, although, as Mr. Pappas said, I think we're in for a little bit of winter tonight, so we'll cover our plans. Tonight, I'm going to provide with you an update on our accreditation progress. You'll remember that back in May of 2012, we hosted an accreditation team from Advanced Ed, because Pecosin City Public Schools were accredited as a result of that visit, and we continue to meet the Advanced Ed standards for a quality school system. In that visit, Pecosin City Public Schools had one required action item as a result, and that was to implement a structured process of continuous improvement that would align all the functions of the district and its schools with expectations for student learning. The Advanced Ed team noted that continuous improvement efforts should be built upon documented results of earlier efforts and be systemic, sustained, and fully embedded in the division and all of its schools. This required action is currently under progress, and we've recently submitted a progress report to that effect to Advanced Ed. All of our efforts to develop a new data-driven and measurable strategic plan help us to meet this required action. And as you know, we've been working to develop this plan with input from the community and staff, students, and the board for the better part of the last two years. It's hard to believe, but we are halfway to our next external review for accreditation. And I wanted to make sure I took time tonight to let you know where we were in that process and what we've submitted thus far, so, thank you. And that's the end of my update tonight.
Any input or discussion? We have a very quiet board today. Thank you very much. Mr. Melton, will you lead us through the consent agenda, please?
Yes, sir. We have four items for tonight. We have the approval of minutes of the March regular meeting and work session. These are enclosed. The approval of financial reports, enclosed. Approval of personnel action, also enclosed. And the authorization to accept and expend in accordance with requests, enclosed.
Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Ms. McDowell?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Cast?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. We'll move on to other matters for consideration tonight. The consideration of approval of minutes of March public hearing and special meeting. And, Dr. Parrish, I can't imagine you have comments about that?
No, I'd leave it to you all to approve those minutes.
Very good. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Ms. McDowell?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Cast?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of six to zero.
Next item, the consideration of approval of proposed increase to meal prices for school year 2014-15. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we've brought this to you for the past couple of years, because the Healthy, Hungry, Free Kids Act of 2010 does require that schools meet certain requirements in terms of what we do with our school lunch prices. We have the option of addressing this through our operating budget or by increasing meal prices. Well, needless to say, with the cuts, millions of dollars of cuts we've made in the last five years, that we just cannot cover this through the operating budget. So we're bringing to you a request to increase meal prices for next school year. It'll be 10 cents for lunch for all schools, and also 10 cents for lunch and breakfast for all adults, and then 5 cent increase for breakfast for our students. So that's the request that we're bringing forward to you tonight. You do have a reading file on it, as well as a chart outlining our proposed versus last year's meal prices. So at this point, I recommend approval of the PCPS meal prices for next school year.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Sir, any discussion? Ms. McDowell?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Cast?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of six to zero.
Next item, the consideration of approval of special education plan for school year 1415. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we have to submit each year a plan as to how we will serve our students with special needs, and this is part of the requirement for us to receive that funding that Mr. Bowen spoke about earlier in his presentation about federal funding. I do want to also stress, as he did, that the funding that we do get from the federal government for our special education programs does not nearly cover the actual cost of those programs. But with that said, what you do have in your reading file is an outline of the components of the special education plan that we will submit to the state in order to access the funds that we need to access for the programs and to fulfill state and federal requirements in terms of what we do do in terms of serving our students with disabilities. So with that said, I recommend approval of the 2013-2014 PCPS Special Education Annual Plan.
Do we have a motion to approve the special education plan?
So moved.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Except for they do some fantastic work.
Agreed.
It's very appreciated.
Any other discussion? Ms. McDowell?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Cast?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of six to zero.
Next item, consideration of approval of the Perkins Grant for school year 1415. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, this again is one of the other federal programs that Mr. Bowen mentioned in his presentation. This funding supports our career and technical education program. So we have to submit the grant for approval to you all as a school board, and then we will forward that so we can access those funds. You have in your reading file information and an outline again of that grant. So at this point, I just recommend approval of the Perkins Grant application for the school year 2014 to 15.
Do we have a motion to approve the Perkins Grant?
So moved.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I do have a question. Mr. Bowen, in the chart you put up tonight, it said 18,000, and this one is for 16, in the 16s. What accounts for that difference?
Well, what happens, we do not have the actual amounts for our federal grants, so we go on with the best information that we have. At the time that we presented the budget to board, that was the information we had. What we could see is we could see additional funding that may be available to the Perkins Grant later in the year, but this is what the initial application is. That really accounts for the difference. At the time that we go to budget development, we do not know exactly what those amounts are, so we cannot give our best educated guess.
Okay, thank you.
And just as an update to the new amount that you see in this application we did just get, which was before the actual budget development, which is what these numbers were based off of a Mr. Bowen's report.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Ms. McDowell?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Cast?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of six to zero.
Next item is the consideration of approval of the 2014-15 school calendar. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we certainly had an interesting calendar year this year, so we have learned some lessons from that. So you will see a couple of changes here in the calendar that we're presenting to you tonight. We are presenting to you a calendar that includes 182 student days, which does give us two days that we can, we have built in for inclement weather, which we did have this year as well, which was very helpful, as we know, for the number of days that we missed. What we are doing on the calendar this year is identifying three holidays that if we have gone beyond our two days, that will become makeup days, so families and staff members know well ahead of time that this holiday could suddenly become a school day if we have a rough winter or a fall storm as well, or a spring storm. Additionally, because Labor Day is as early as it can be, it's a September 1 Labor Day, the nice part about it is it is one of those years where you actually will see a two-week winter break on the calendar because of the way, especially where New Year's falls. But also because of that, it affects that June calendar. So we had to make two additional changes, otherwise we would have actually ended school on a Monday, which is, for a variety of reasons, not a great idea. And also, one of those being, where would you put graduation if you finished school on a Monday? I'm not sure the seniors want to wait six days to graduate. So anyways, as a result of that, to get that ending date away from Monday, June 15th, what we'll do is have an early release day on February 13th, which is the Friday before President's Day. And it's actually what we did this year, because we needed to fit another day in as a makeup day, so it'll mirror exactly the sort of three, three-and-a-half-day weekend that we had around President's Day. And also on Veterans Day, that will be an early release day as well. So we'll use the afternoon of Veterans Day as a conference day for teachers and have students in the building for a half-day. Note, as it says in your reading file, we have done some research, and many of the school divisions locally do still have these students in for Veterans Day. But for those families that might want to celebrate it, it does mean they can go off for that afternoon as a recognition of it, and we'll certainly be recognizing Veterans Day in the schools, since we'll actually have the students in the schools to do that. So those are the real changes in the calendar. So with that, I recommend approval of the calendar for the 1415 school year.
Do we have a motion to approve the school calendar?
So moved.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion?
I have a question. I assume we're pretty close to the New Horizons and Governor's School calendar?
Yes, we actually follow a regional calendar. The six school divisions that co-own New Horizons do that. So we have the same winter break, and we have the same spring break. And obviously, everybody in the state has the same starting day. But those are the two breaks that we do have the same. There's also a regional professional development day in January. The shorter holidays, single days are a little different, although we're pretty close in that as well. But we do want to make sure those two major breaks are the same, so that our students aren't missing out on instruction if New Horizons were to be operating, or vice versa for another school division, so.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I'd like to go on record and say we will have zero snow days, that's my prediction, and we'll miss one day for tidal flooding.
We'll hold you to that, and I hope that is what it is.
It was for snow.
Ms. McDowell?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Cast?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, tonight, we have four wonderful proclamations of recognition. The first one is Military Child Month. "And whereas thousands of brave Americans have demonstrated their courage and commitment to freedom by serving the armed forces of the United States, both on active duty and the National Guard and Reserves, whereas children and youth of our service members continue to make significant contributions to family, Pecosin City Public Schools, the Commonwealth and the nation, despite prolonged and repeated absences of one or both parents, we therefore be it proclaimed tonight on the 15th day of April in the year 2014 by the School Board of Pecosin that the month of April be celebrated as Military Child Month in all Pecosin City Public Schools." The second proclamation, Teacher Appreciation Week, May 5th through the 9th. "Whereas teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams, and teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors. Whereas we honor the dedicated men and women who lend their passion and skills to educating our children, because we believe teaching is one of the most valuable professions in this country. Now therefore be it proclaimed on this 15th day of April in the year 2014 by the School Board that the week of May 5th through 9th be celebrated as Teacher Appreciation Week." School Nutrition Employee Appreciation Week. "Whereas nutritious meals at school are a central part of the school day, whereas the staff at Pecosin City Public Schools, meals and nutrition are committed to providing healthy nutritious meals to the school's children, whereas the hard-working staff who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support, the week of May 5th through 9th is National Child Nutrition Employee Appreciation Week." The last but not least, a proclamation, School Nurse Appreciation Day. "Whereas children are the future, and by investing in them today, we are ensuring the world for tomorrow, whereas school nurses are professional nurses that advance the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievements of all students by providing a critical safety net for our nation's most fragile children, whereas school nurses support the health and educational success of our children and youth by developing and providing programs and leadership, we therefore be it proclaimed on this 15th day of April that May 7th be celebrated as School Nurse Day in all Pecosin City Public Schools." And I would like to entertain a motion that we accept all four of these proclamations.
I move that all four proclamations be accepted as written.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Any discussion, which I can't do after reading, then? Anybody? Ms. McDowell?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman, Vice Chairman Cast?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you very much. Ms. McDowell, is there any public comment tonight?
No, sir, there is none.
Okay, we'll move on to communication by School Board and Superintendent, and we're going to have Dr. Parrish kick us off.
Yes, I want to first thank our city manager, Mr. Randy Wheeler, and our city council members. I had the pleasure of attending the council meeting last night, and the city manager presented his budget, which was very supportive of the schools in terms of providing a plan that would actually fill our shortfall $450,000. After his budget presentation, many of the council members spoke very clearly in support of the schools and trying to do all they can to help us. Again, they recognized, as Mr. Bowen did tonight in his presentation, and as we have over and over again in our meetings, that it really is a result of the state no longer making public education a priority, that our locality is really having to do all they can do to try and stop the bleeding, for lack of a better word, in terms of the cuts. As I've said so many times, cutting $5 million in the last five years has just been very challenging to do another $450,000 in cuts when it would all, for the most part, have to come in positions, is just incredibly challenging. So I just want to take the opportunity to publicly thank them. I know that we'll have a joint meeting with city council on April 28th, and we'll be able to thank them personally. But it was quite a nice evening for me last night to be able to sit in the audience and hear the level of support that we had, not only from our city staff, our city manager, but also our city council members. I feel very, very fortunate to be able to have that experience, because there are a lot of superintendents that cannot say that. So a big thank you to them. And also, just a thank you, as we come off a spring break, and hopefully, everybody's had some chance to rest and relax. But to our teachers, we saw just four shiny examples of our teachers this evening and the hard work that they do for our students every day. And we are now headed towards SOL and AP testing, and I know our teachers will be very busy preparing our students as we do the final push for that, as well as our staff that works with them. And also, a thank you, as always, to our community groups, like the Kiwanis, who provide so much support to our schools. It was terrific to see so many of them out in the audience tonight. And again, we had some shining students today, so it's just nice to see our students be so successful, those that are getting ready to leave us and move on to college. So those are my comments for the evening.
Thank you very much. Marissa is not feeling well tonight, and Ms. Rollins has agreed to step in for Marissa, which is appropriate, because they're very similar in age, so.
Isn't he something? Good evening. The primary school is jumping right back into learning after the break. Mrs. Seltzer's first-grade class recently completed a design project for the perfect classroom reading chair. They began by brainstorming a web, completing graphic organizers, sketches, and computer drawings. Students in Mr. Seltzer's advanced drawing class at Grafton High School took the students' ideas and designs and created a cardboard reading chair to fit their descriptions and needs. While Mr. Seltzer's students were building the chair, Mrs. Seltzer's students completed chair-based literacy activities, such as making connections to literature, writing letters, making predictions about the chair, and writing informational reports. After months of working collaboratively on the project, the first graders were excited when the cardboard dinosaur chair finally arrived in their classroom last month. They love grabbing their book boxes to relax and read in the chair. The elementary school is in need of volunteers for the Festival of the Arts, which will be taking place on Tuesday, April 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00. Students will soon be bringing more information home on the event, but as of now, they're focusing on getting help for the event. There is a sign-up link on EdLine for any parents who would like to help out. In the middle school, SOL prep is on Mondays and Thursdays from 2:30 to 3:30. Spring Picture Day is this Thursday during the PE classes. Students making the honor roll will be recognized on Friday with the Honor Roll Ice Cream Social sponsored by the PTO. The Spring Band Concert is May 8th at 7:00 p.m. The Festival of the Arts Night is April 24th with an Outback Steakhouse Dinner during the art show in the cafeteria. Tickets are limited, so make sure to buy them quickly. The high school would like to say congratulations to the Jazz Choir for their second-place finish at the Hanover Festival of Choirs, and congratulations to the Harmonettes for receiving an excellent rating. Today was Where Purple Day, in honor of all the sacrifices that our military kids must make. This was a declaration by the Commonwealth. And lastly, the National Honor Society induction ceremony will be held on May 14th.
Thank you very much. Great job. Do you have comments?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Mr. Hux?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. No comment tonight?
Thank you.
Yes, I do have a couple of things to mention. Couple of weeks ago, I was very happy to attend the Pecosin Education Foundation's big fundraiser for the year, and it was Vegas night with gaming tables, not real money, but gaming tables, and a lot of items up for silent auction, and then items up for live auction. It was a lot of fun. I think everybody had a very good time. I can say, since I was there as a witness, that some of us had a little more fun than others, Mr. Pappas. And Mr. Pappas was the life of the party, I think, at the craps table. But special thanks to the Education Foundation for all the work they did. It's amazing to me that these people are volunteers, that they give their time to put something like this together. They raised just over $20,000 for the schools, which is a huge amount to help our schools out. Also, thanks for everybody who went out there. We had some council members there, we had some staff members there, and citizens, interested citizens. So it was really a wonderful night. Also, the Education Foundation administers several scholarships and would like to remind our students out there, our seniors, that these scholarships are available, and they need to go to the guidance office and pick out an application, fill it out, submit it, and best of luck to all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. Ms. Sidner?
I'd like to thank all the students who came, and congratulations to our great wrestlers and musicians, they did very well. And congratulations to all the teachers. You know, the four very special teachers were up here tonight. They all deserve it, but I know there's not enough awards to go around every year, but congratulations to them.
Thank you. Mr. Melton?
Yes, last Thursday, I was able to go to a Career and Technical Ed, Creating Excellence Award Selection Meeting in Richmond. And I can't tell you who wins, but in June, we'll know. But there are some local people that are contending for some awards at the state level. And I attend another meeting this week, a regular Career and Tech Ed meeting this Thursday. But I would like to thank Dr. Parrish for her tireless support of our budgets. She has been, I think, talking to every group out there in our community, council members, individuals, and she has just done an amazing job of continuing to bring that concern and make it publicly known, and I appreciate her tireless efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Melton. I also would like to echo the support of our city council and city manager. It's been amazing, the level of support that they've given us, given that we're not receiving the funding from other sources, and they continue to support the schools at a very high level and make sure that we have what we need to provide for our students. Thank you very much for that. I'd like to tell Gary Carter that we missed him tonight, our chairman, and he had to I'd like to tell Gary Carter that we missed him tonight, our chairman, and he had to be out of town on business, and we missed him, and we hope he comes back soon. Like to thank the Kiwanis, and also to commend the Teachers of the Year. And it's just four teachers standing in front of us, but what they represent is the wonderful work of all the teachers in the school system. So congratulations to them. And that's all I have. And is there any material for board review?
There is none tonight.
Well, it looks like this meeting will stand adjourned.